February 21st, February 2nd. A couple Housekeeping things before we get started. If you keep your microphone muted while you're not speaking, it will make it easier for everybody to hear. And when you want to speak, you just unmute your microphone. And if you get into the questions and answers or whatever, if you want to speak, raise your hand so I can see who you are. Hold on you. And what I would ask is that people can make the comments all they want, but let's get the first round out. And then if you want to say something else, that's not a problem. And I want to welcome you to the, I guess, I don't know if it's 159th pre-con meeting, but it certainly is 159th of the academic meeting. And as we go, this is our first for everybody. This is the first time we've had a pre-con meeting via some kind of a tri- zoo versus in person. So I'd like to say that the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District goes first. Are you ready? Are they on?
They're on. Jack Brier, are you ready for the Wyndham Northeast?
If you need, don't forget, unmute your microphone. So do I understand that the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, there's still a representative here to speak?
There is one, and he's here. And hopefully, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hear you now?
All right. I've got about 10 screens open. I was, the question I have for you all is whether or not you want me to, can I put on a screen of the, of the report? Or is that useful here? What should we do? Tell me.
What I have found is if you're on an Apple and you do that, you mess up everybody's computer. If you're not on an Apple, then you probably can't.
Well, I'm on a Mac, and therefore, we've answered a question. Okay, hold on just one second while we get set up. Because I pulled this up for you and talked to it. And that sounds like the process. If that will be acceptable to everyone. And my, I will have to get myself a PC again, I guess, is what this tells me. The, the, the Wyndham Northeast budget is on the, is on the website at WNESU. It's not terribly easy to find, I found out tonight. You know, actually, if you guys wouldn't mind and have somebody else go in front of me, it would be easier because I can, I spent most of my time buzzing around just now to find the, to find how to get onto this meeting. And I now have to go back and find where I put all the documents.
Is the Bellas Falls High School ready to speak?
I sure am. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. So why don't we thank you while Jack is trying to figure out what he needs to do here?
That works for me. Let me begin by introducing myself. I'm Chris Hotson. I'm the principal at the Bellas Falls Union High School. I have, for the past 16 years or so, graciously accepted your invitation to come and talk a little bit about the high school, particularly with the budget in mind. Given venue, I think what I'm going to revert to because is to read the letter that I have prepared that goes with the budget materials. As we all know, typically, we're all in the gym, and you have access to those documents, thinking you can look through them. So I don't know that there's a lot for me, a lot to be gained by me putting the actual budget up there. But my letter, I think, provides a reasonable summary of where we stand, particularly with COVID in mind. Is that acceptable to folks?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say that's good.
Sounds good. So, dear members of the BFUHS community, my name is Chris Hotson, and this is my 16th year as the principal of the Bellas Falls Union High School, making this also the 16th budget that I have created in collaboration with the staff of the school, the WNESU administration, and the BFUHS school board. As you can probably imagine, this was, in many ways, the most challenging budget to create for many reasons which I will outline below. As I address these challenges, I will do so by providing some information which will highlight some very important information for community members as you consider your support for the budget specifically and for the Bellas Falls Union High School in general. Number one, with a solid understanding of the challenging economic climate that we are all experiencing, we made a conscious effort to restrict spending as much as possible. The result of that is a budget that is 2% below the previous budget. In each of the previous 15 budgets that I have worked collaboratively to create, we have always endeavored to minimize spending while maximizing student opportunities. In most of those previous years, we have controlled spending to a level well below the rate of inflation, oftentimes with a level-funded budget or a budget just slightly above level-funded. This FY22 budget is by far the lowest budget when compared to the previous budget. While there are many large and small budget decisions which add up to these savings, it is important once again to note that the current state has guided the creation of this year's budget. I'm very pleased with the degree to which this budget has accomplished the goal of reducing spending while addressing well the needs of students. Number two, in this annual letter from me, the BFUHS principal, to you, the BFUHS community, I would typically take some time to point out the range of outstanding successes that our school has experienced over the past year or to point out the creative and innovative educational programming to be funded by this budget. Due to COVID-19 and the severe restrictions that the pandemic has placed on our services to students and our interactions between school and staff, school staff and students, we have had fewer opportunities for our traditional areas of success. That is, limited opportunities for academic enriching experiences such as Envirothon or for traditional athletics or for art and music performances. Where we have excelled is in meeting the challenges of recreating the high school experience through remote learning and through reduced teacher-student in-person interactions. Few educators and students had any experience in the new teaching and learning modes that we were compelled to employ. And yet, from the first week of fully remote learning nearly one year ago through the recent start of the second semester of the 2020-21 school year, our students and staff have approached this recreated school of the COVID-19 pandemic with a strong commitment to making the most of the learning opportunities that we still have available. Very few, if any, teachers and students prefer what we are currently doing to the traditional full week of full-day in-person learning experiences. Who would? Education is a people business that is best served with in-person experiences that lend themselves to relationship building. Despite these challenges, I have seen every day teachers and students finding new and creative ways to successfully work through high school courses with students earning high school credit toward high school graduation, demonstrating a noteworthy determination to make this work until we get back to normal, hopefully soon. My last point of emphasis for this budget-related message is to call to your attention that from the 2019-2020 school budget, we controlled our spending, that is, again, last year's budget, not the one we're currently on. We controlled our spending to the point of creating a budget surplus of $202,000. Much of this surplus can be attributed to a reduction of spending related to the over three months of fully remote learning that we experienced from March through June of 2020. This surplus is being rolled over into the FY2020, excuse me, the FY22 budget as revenue. What that means to the taxpayers is that this money will directly reduce the amount of money needed to be raised by taxes to fund this budget. This $202,000 of revenue makes up nearly 2.7% of the proposed budget. When this is combined with the budget that is already 2% below the level of spending from the previous budget, I hope that people can recognize that we have taken many significant steps this year to control spending and to serve the needs of the taxpayers in these trying economic times. Some of you may be wondering if these conservative budgeting actions designed to reduce spending and reduce the taxpayer burden will negatively impact academic programming or student opportunities. I am very confident that we will be able to provide the same high-quality education that the community has come to expect from BFUHS with the proposed level of spending. I must note that it is still difficult to predict what our instruction will look like when we start spending from this budget by July. What I do know is that when we start our transition back to some level of normalcy, we will still need the same level of staffing with the same dedicated teachers and support staff that we currently employ. For example, we do not anticipate any significant change to our enrollment numbers. This reality has caused me to strongly promote the need to neither add to the current staff level nor to reduce the current staffing level. This will be the key to maintaining our ability to serve well the wide range of student needs that we find in our school community. This will also be the key to addressing the lost learning and the need for remediation that is the result of our modified modes of instruction and our heavy reliance on remote learning during the pandemic. I will stop there because the last part is, while still important, kind of a common message that I send every year, which is encouraging folks to also support the RVTC budget, the River Valley Technical Center budget, which is the career center in Springfield that our students attend. That's what I got for you.
Do we have any questions? Hardy?
I've been, I'm on the Grafton Advisory Committee. So basically, I've been concerned with the WNUESD budgets and data. However, I did also come across the Bellas Falls Union High School data. And it's my understanding, as I look at it, that the education spending per equalized pupil, which is a very key number in determining people's taxes, is $19,427.38. Unfortunately, this is over the excess spending threshold allowed by the state of Vermont, which means we incur a penalty of $622.81 and come up with a total of spending per pupil of $20,050.19. Now, I understand, this is, you know, it's a difficult time. But this is also the second year that we have incurred this excess spending. So I believe we really need to start taking a hard look at the budget and where we can go because the total number of pupils in the school is not going up. In fact, I believe it's significantly going down over time. So that's just my comment. And I leave that with you, and you can comment further if you'd like.
Well, all that I have to say is, I could just speak to the enrollment piece. Again, in my, I've actually been working at the school for over 20 years. Yes, our enrollment has come down significantly. But in the past, really, five years, we, our enrollment has been fairly level, is what it's been, pretty much in the low 300s. So, but I agree with you. I agree that we need to take the action that we can in order to control and reduce spending. That's why I highlighted that we are not asking for an increased budget. We are asking, we are proposing a budget that is down by 2%. And when we would normally take some of that surplus and set it aside into a maintenance reserve fund, a rainy day fund for facilities, we took it all and sent it back in as revenue. And so those are two really big steps that are the direction that you're proposing and that you're suggesting, which is of a big budget and money to offset the education spending.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also understand from Bill that I can only see a few faces. So if there's people that who are on the screen and you would like to comment, please let me know so you can be addressed.
Joe? This is Jack Brier. Yeah, I would mind to speak to this a little bit. One of the things that happened last year, we approved a budget where we walked out of the room thinking that we were below the threshold and then found out that we weren't. It's no real secret that we had a few hiccups in our finance department and some of the calculations that we got were off by quite a bit. And that made a difference. This year, we think the numbers are much more accurate. The revenue numbers are much more accurate. It still is over the threshold, which I think still was a bit of a surprise to us when we finished. But that is a goal that will be below it in future years. And I think our administration is very much aware that whether we think it's fair or whether we don't think it's fair, that we have towns here that are not wealthy and really can't be spending over the, over that threshold cap. And Hardy and I have talked about it, and I can give a take on this.
Any other individuals who would like to make a comment? If not, thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay. And we have a basketball game going on, so I'm going to excuse myself and go down to that. There's no fans there, so I've got to cheer for about 100 people, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Take care.
Jack, are you ready to talk about the elementary school?
I am. I am. I wrote a rather lengthy letter, which I'm not going to read because it's a lengthy letter, and it's part of the school report, which is at the WNESU website. I think that most people here want, don't want to hear me complain about how hard the year was because everybody's year has been hard. They'd probably like to know what the budget looks like, so I want to go there. Here's our bottom line. We're going to be asking voters to approve a grand total of $6,954,084 to run our schools next year. Now, this includes the pre-K program, which it didn't in a couple of years ago. But it also includes the tuition that we pay for our kids, seven through eight. And if people have been following this, they'll know that, that had a couple of bumps, that we also get assessed at the high school on a per-pupil basis. And we're doing sort of a bit of a bump of a relatively large cohort from those from junior and senior year that is going through the system. But our population is relatively small. The bottom line is for K through eight, this $6,900,000 budget is about $150,000 more than it cost last year, but $5,000 less than it was the year before.
Okay.
Did somebody have a question?
No.
Or somebody not?
Somebody needs to move their microphone. Go ahead, Jack.
All right. Because we're going to be asking voters elsewhere to consider the Westminster withdrawal. And because candidly, the Westminster school is so far away from the Grafton school, and there's no real mixing of the students because of geography, we've kept a bottom line split out so that people could see what the cost would be for an Athens graph and a Westminster separate budget. That, of that $6,954,000 and change, if Westminster is a separate district, that district would have a budget of $5,187,960. And Grafton and Athens together would have a budget of $1,766,000. And, let me say that again, $1,766,724. Now, equalized pupil is this wonderful Byzantine thing that Hardy has caught up with. It's an equalized pupil calculus that counts handicapped kids a little bit more, counts high school students a little bit more, and elementary school students significantly less. So your elementary school students are not, as far as the state's concerned, a full equalized pupil. If we split the two districts, split the district into two parts, Grafton's per-pupil, equalized pupil would be about $103 more than the West, than Westminster considered separately. That's, we think that, there's another calculation the state uses which would suggest it might be closer to $200. But these numbers aren't forecast for the future. We think there's a bond obligation that the, that the town of Westminster would have to shift away from us, and that would be a savings of, or in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $35,000 per pupil. There's a, there's some renovation issues that would, we think, affect Grafton's budget in the neighborhood of $15,000 to $20,000 at some future year because the buildings, if you've been outside, needs a paint job, among other things. Altogether, again, we've gone through a once-in-a-century pandemic. When we started the year, we were concerned that we were going to be incurring massive deficits. Our administration's found funds. Our teachers have found savings. We've managed to keep, we think we are rolling towards possibly a small surplus rather than a large deficit. We won't be applying it to next year because you can't because of the state. But we will be applying it to 2023 when it comes. That's pretty much the story. You may know that we had the crisis in our Supervisory Union's finance office that really did mess up some of the projections from last year. That's fixed for Pagan. If you've not met her, she's somebody worth getting to know. She has really done a remarkable job of turning that office around, as has Superintendent Chris Pratt. You may have heard that we got sued about people, from people from out of state that wanted to go to a all-tuition system and force us to be the first. That doesn't seem to be happening. We are worried about something called Act 173, which would change the way that the state compensates special education. Effectively, they won't. And it does mean that little schools are vulnerable to fluctuations in that population. I will say that Andy Haas and the team at the Supervisory Union has done a remarkable job reducing sped costs and is one of the reasons why this budget is where it is and not completely out of whack. So that's the bottom line. Any questions, anyone?
Hi, dude. Jack, I have a question.
Yeah.
When you talk about us allowing Westminster to opt out of the union and then, and then we move forward, I know you can't predict, but do you have any kind of idea of which way the state might go, could go? And if so, by when?
Well, I know Hardy's, this is more Hardy's bailwreck than mine because I basically sloughed all this off onto him and to Don Capicelli over in Athens. In terms of what was going to happen at the State Board of Education, it really depends on which law the, both the SDE and the courts decide are applicable. There's a 172 and a 170, either 479 that is applicable here whether or not the districts have rights or towns have the rights to control them. There was written back when the issue was, would towns like Grafton withdraw from the high school when they're the town board? And we'd have to debate every couple of years, as people may remember. The, so we've got some uncharted territory. We've been told that we have probably the strongest case of any of the, of any of the fine districts in the sense that, as I told Hardy, this may be a case of the dog that caught the car. And that we, if we go through and apply to the SDE, our chances are actually not bad that we may get approved and this may go through. One never knows. The good news from my perspective is that the town of Westminster is forming a school district that's really going to be there mostly so that there is an entity that isn't me that could sue if SDE turns it down so they can litigate for their right to withdraw. And that won't be coming out of our bottom line. And I'm, and I think that's, that's the way to deal with the problem. We will, I'm anticipating going to the SDE meetings and testifying. I will definitely support, obviously, if, if all the towns approve this. And that's what I got. That help you, or did I miss your question?
Yeah. So what's the timeframe? Are we talking like months, another year? Or could we be looking at the next year's budget as this, if we did, if it does pass? I mean, are we looking at next year's budget that we're going to be on our own again, or?
You know, that's going to be completely up to the discretion of the SVE. One of the reasons why we have this split is so that people know what that split would look like and even have some rough tax estimates of what it would look like should the, should this be broken out. But I got to tell you, the, Reedsboro went through this, and it took them 14 months. I'm assuming that the most likely case is this will be our budget for this year. And any, any split would take place on the fiscal year for the FY23. But I don't know. Surprises are surprises. And at least we'll know what it's like if they split us in the middle of the school year. I just don't, I just don't imagine that they're going to do that. I think that, I know our administrators would not be terribly happy if that happens because it's a lot of paperwork, but we'll just have to see.
Will we revert back to a joint-contract school again? Like we were called before, so we're not, we wouldn't be. What would we be considered?
We would be considered the, we would be considered the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District. Just exactly. And if we, we, or Athens decide to withdraw two or three years from now, the district, it would still be called the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, even if it had one, one member. The State Board created this entity. And we're not trying to dissolve the entity because we'd lose that case. We've lost it already once. We're saying, fine, you have the right to create an entity, and we have the right to decide who's in it. And so that's our process. We're together for, I can't remember now how many years it's been. The only real difference is that it will be a single taxing entity rather than two taxing entities. It'll be a Grafton-Athens combined taxing entity as opposed to just a Grafton and a Athens graph, which is how it was before. We didn't feel that that was a fight we wanted to take on. This year, we wanted to get the State Board of Education used to saying yes to us. And once they get used to saying yes to us, then we might ask for some other things.
I never did get any reports, Jack, from this unified district there. So there's, there's no paperwork, no financial reports, no budget report for me to hand out?
There was, supposed to have been. And I will tell you, I had a very unpleasant conversation about that about two hours before this meeting. There is a, there is a, it is available online. And I will give you the URL to send around. And I will pledge to you that we're going to have paper copies in the next, in the next day or so, if I have to go and get them made myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, Jack?
Do we have any other questions, Jack?
I mean, do you want to discuss, uh, the, uh, the separation from Westminster and, uh, at this time rather than waiting till the article?
I got an email that you might want to maybe combine discussion on Article Six, um, during the, uh, school agenda. Is that what you guys want to do?
We would prefer to do that because otherwise, you know, it's all going to be about the schools.
It's Article 16.
For everybody who, who is listening, this is now Article 16 in your town report, and that is shall the voters of the town of Grafton approve and ratify the withdrawal of the town of Westminster from the Windham Northeast Elementary Union School District subject to the certification of Westminster's January 5, 2021 vote to withdraw. So who would like us to speak? Hardy, do you want to go first?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Hardy Merrill. Uh, I'm a member of the Grafton Advisory Committee, which was appointed by the Select Board, and, um, I have been working on this for, uh, several weeks now, and the facts as I see them and my comments are as follows. The schools are nearly 40 minutes apart, which makes it nearly impossible for them to share staff or move students from one location to another. No savings have been identified since the merger, except the elimination of the need to have a separate audit for the Grafton and Athens school budgets, and this is because the supervisory union has already taken over prior to the merger the following functions: the bus service, special education, food service, payroll and accounting, most of the expenses associated with the paraeducators, the negotiated savings related to ordering bulk supplies. Basically, this is all done by the SU in Bellas Falls and it's allocated out to all of the schools that are in the union. Grafton and Athens are at a distinct disadvantage when it comes to having any impact over a combined WNUESD budget when it comes down to a decision by the voters. Currently, Grafton has 525 registered voters, Athens 268, which makes a total of 793. This is 22.8% of the registered voters that are impacted by this school budget. Westminster has the other 2,689 registered voters for 77.2%. There is a similar disparity between towns regarding the state's method of determining the cost for equalized student, which is a major contributor in determining a town's homestead tax education rate, the number of, which is based on the number of equalized pupils divided into the budget. Grafton and Athens have 88.32 or 25.3% of the educated students in this district, and Westminster has 260.69 or 74.7%. Athens's portion of the WNUESD budget, and this is Athens and Grafton, as of 1/7/21 is 1,766,724, as Jack stated earlier. That's 25.4% of the total for the district. If Westminster were not included in the WNUESD budget this year, my analysis indicates that the separation would have an insignificant impact on Grafton or Athens' homestead education tax rate before adjustment for the town's CLA. Specifically, the tax rate for Grafton for the WNUESD as a combined with Westminster would be 1.0559. Without Westminster, this would be 1.0602. This is only a .0044% one cent difference. So basically, this year, there would no, be no impact from this dissolution or getting away from working with Westminster. So basically, where we're left is what I said originally in the Grafton News, which voters must decide if they want to continue in a larger district, which may provide more stable homestead tax rates as student populations decline, or if they want more local control and the ability with Athens to determine how the town's children will be educated in the future. Are there any questions? That's basically where I am. And maybe there's other people who are on the committee that would like to come. And other committee members were Rachel Plummer, uh, Chris Wallace, uh, Joe Polio, and Kathy Ciano.
Do we have any questions, Hardy? Or Jack?
Um, I have one little point that, uh, is worth making.
Who's speaking?
This is Jack Pryor. Uh, Hardy makes a, makes an interesting point that I hadn't thought about until he made it, which is how much leverage we have over the WNES, excuse me, the WNESU, the, the Supervisory Union budget. Uh, presently, the Ra, the Grafton-Athens-Westminster together have three votes on that nine-man board, uh, because, uh, the SU is an association of boards, technically it's not, it's a municipality. Within Westminster, if, if Westminster's withdrawal is approved by everybody, there would be, the new configuration would be a supervisory union board of 12, not nine, and, uh, Grafton-Athens and Westminster together would have six votes on that 12-man board. So suddenly, we would have, if not a majority, certainly a threshold that, uh, expenses would be subject to our approval. That's not been the case in the last couple of years, but it's a point worth making because the other two, uh, boards on that SU would be, be, uh, would be the Bellas Falls Union High School Board, which I am on, and the Rockingham Board. Now, a number of years ago, we intentionally shoved things into the SU as an alternative to consolidation of Westminster, Athens, Grafton, and Rockingham for its consolidation. We made, we even wrote, I wrote a white paper that went to the legislature arguing that you could save more money by consolidating, making administrative consolidation than you could by, uh, depriving people of their franchise, which was the Act 46 solution. The reality is that we haven't seen a lot of savings, but we're starting to, we're starting to see them in transportation and next year and the year following, we could see some significant ones on the special education side. But what we can't do is we can't fix geography and we can't make, uh, Grafton and Athens closer to, uh, to Westminster. We can't move that mountain between us, and that's the bottom line, is the basis for our argument before the SBE and reason that I feel, uh, wise heads will, you know, much of what caused, in my view, the forced consolidation over the AOE's recommendation, uh, was because the State Board of Education so wanted Athens and Grafton to merge that, uh, Westminster was collateral damage and get pulled in too, or we were collateral damage, depending on how you look at it. So, uh, I think Hardy's laid up enough numbers, I completely support his analysis, and there you are.
Do we have any other comments for Jack or Hardy? If not, thank you Hardy and Jack for your report, and, um, we'll, we'll move on to the River Valley Technical Center. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on that? Yes, not? So we'll move into the, um, the town space of the street town meeting, and, um, so we'll, we'll deal with Article One, that's basically a simple thing that, except the orders report. Do we have any comments or questions about that article?
No, you skipped, you skipped the first article.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It was the first article, choose all town offices and vote, um, whatever the post of the town meeting. We've been doing this anyway, uh, in, in, in last year, so nothing has changed. So are there any comments? Okay, then going back to Article Two, uh, to accept the order, the orders report that we do every year at, at the local pre-town meeting, and town meeting. So do we have any questions there? Okay. Uh, Article Three, uh, shall the town of Grafton authorize the Select Board to borrow money respectively if necessary for covered expenses in anticipation of collection of taxes? That's always been a point of claim at every town meeting, and that allows the town, in case there's an issue, a flood or disaster, to go out and borrow money to fix it rather than having a special community or some other need we need to have. Any questions about that one? Okay. All right, so the next, the next one is, um, shall the town of Grafton raise $599,000, $500,000 to offer for the maintenance of highways and bridges? Are we, any, any questions about that article?
Uh, Joe, I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
Article Four, uh, states that the town of Grafton will raise $599,500 for the maintenance of highway and bridges. On page 19 at the top, the budget expended is, uh, 719,500. It's a difference of $120,000. If you go to page 20 at the bottom, you will see at the bottom, there's a state grant for $120,000, and that is why the difference.
Any questions? Okay, the next one is Article Five, shall the town of Grafton raise $227,813 to authorize the sum for the Select Board's budget? Do we have any questions about the Select Board's budget of 227,000? Kevin?
Yeah. Um, like Article Four, the Selectment, the Select Board, over the course of five or six public hearings, um, are level funding our budget, which is $200,027,813 for the Select Board budget. Any questions?
Okay. Um, Article Six, shall the town of Grafton raise $9,000, uh, $9,000 for the ambulance service? Do we have somebody from Fast Squad who wants to speak to this?
Hi, Ken.
Go ahead.
This is for, um, transportation, um, ambulance service for the town of Grafton, and it's a 24-hour, um, deal. So the fast squad, um, or the rescue squad stabilizes the patient, um, it's automatic response from mutual aid, we send out, um, Golden Cross. So the 9,000 is for the whole year for service, uh, 24-hour service for the year. Um, they do a great job and we depend on them.
They do a great job, that's for sure. Any questions of, of Kathy on Article Six? Okay, now, let's move on to Article Seven, shall the town of Grafton raise $29,950 for fire, for firefighters' association operating expenses? Uh, who wants to address on this? Is there somebody from the fire squad with a mic to deal with this?
Yeah, Joe, it's Robbie Sprague here.
Hi, Robbie, welcome.
New chief. Um, alls I can say on this is it, it is up $2,000 from last year. Um, we tried to keep it level funded, um, but basically the $2,000 is just an increase for the cost of everything that's been going up. Um, and some of that is maintenance on our 21-year, well, the truck's 21 years old, the ladder's actually like 35 years old. Um, so that's, that's where we're at with that budget and we just ask for everybody's support.
Any questions from Robbie? If not, we'll move on to Article Eight, uh, shall the town of Grafton raise $3,000 for Grafton Rescue Squad operating expenses? Is there any, Kathy, you want to deal with that or is there somebody else here from the squad?
Um, so.
I can, Kathy, if you want.
Yeah.
I'd add to it.
Well, it's Robbie again. Um, basically, this $3,000 is level funded. Most of our, uh, operating expense, well, that's the operating expense, but a lot of money comes in from donations, so we don't necessarily have to ask the town for a lot. Um, so it's pretty much been level funded for the last few years.
Yeah, and at one time, um, we were asking the town $9,000, but because of the donations that have come in and also, um, our training equipment, we received grants for a lot of that, um, my, um, training equipment. So as Robbie said, we do level fund it for 3,000.
But can I, can I just make, um, I had, this is Kim.
Yeah.
I had talked to Keith earlier and, um, he also noticed there was one thing that we neglected to see is that the rescue in their budget on page 53, um, they did allow, um, for 4,500 for their 21, 22 budget year, um, but wires got crossed, communication didn't make it, and, um, the request wasn't put in to, um, increase their request. Um, so we had left the article staying at the 3,000, but you'll notice, um, that their budget sheet on page 53 shows that they were actually hoping to anticipate 4,500. Um, it'll be something that they're going to have to be sure to check on next year, they said, uh, Keith said. Um, it was just, it was just a mix-up is all it was, so.
Any other comments? Robbie, ready?
No, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Article Nine, that is shall the town of Grafton approve expenditures of any grant monies awarded for purposes named in such grant or grant to the fiscal year 2021, 22. Um, I'll just read this so, so we understand why it's there. This authorizes the town, Select Board, and the clerk to spend the money each receives from grants, i.e., the past the town has received grants for highway paving, hydrological improvements and ditching structures, and the grants, and the clerk's grants for digitizing records, virtual meetings, elections, for the purpose of which the grant was awarded to the town. This is an ordinary and usual article, and this comes every year, and without this article, uh, if, if we had a grant, we would have to have a special town meeting to authorize the, accept the grant, so I would urge that not be voted in. Any questions? Okay. Article 10 is the, the mandatory article. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but, um, is there any representatives from the, um, the articles who'd like to speak on their behalf? This is.
For, for those listed in, in Article 10.
Right.
There are other articles that come in.
This is, this is something that, um, they, they, the organization requests, and we just put it in as a, as a, as a part of the, the morning. So is there anybody here who would like to speak to it? Kathy?
Yeah. Um, I can speak about, well, Grafton Cares and, um, the Senior Solutions, um, Parks Place. There are terrible amounts that they're asking. There are terrible amounts that they're asking for, but it does serve a percentage of our folks here in Grafton. Not just the seniors, but our young, young adults and teenagers with their programs that they offer. So, I do hope that Article Ten will pass.
Any other comments? I'm assuming that there is no representative of these organizations present. Okay. Now, move on to Article Eleven, shall the town of Grafton raise $200,000 for the capital budget, $15,000 for fire truck fund, $1,388,000, $609,000 for highway equipment reserve, and $46,391 for the bridge construction program? Who would like, or Hardy, if you'd like to speak about the capital budget?
Yes, I'm happy to make some comments. Again, my name is Hardy Merrill, and I was chairman of the Capital Budget Committee this year. The biggest item on our budget for this year is the equipment needs, and that's at $138,000 plus dollars. The main reason for that is in the next four years, we're going to have to make some significant expenditures for capital equipment. This year, in 2021-22, we don't have anything other than what we have already purchased and had money for, which was a truck, which we just received the other day after a year, which is helping us with all of our snow removal, and that's a plus. The next year, in 2022-23, we still will have our lease of $23,198 for the excavator. But we will also need to replace truck number two, which is coming up with its useful life after depreciation, which will be $145,000 is estimate. That's after we get a trade-in value. The next year, in 2023-24, we will have the replacement of truck number three. We may be able to push this off, but it's, that's the pickup truck, and it's only $25,000. So, that's not a significant amount that year. But when we get to 2024-25, we have to replace truck number one, which is gonna cost $160,000. We're gonna need to replace our loader, which is $100,000. And we're gonna need to replace our grader, which is $200,000. And these amounts are significantly lower than what it would be if we were not getting significant trade-ins. As an example, on the grader, we're gonna get $100,000 trade-in if we do it that year, and $85,000 on the loader if we do it that year. If we extend that out, I think John Gregory can attest to this, then we're going to be running into much less amounts of money that we're gonna get on our trade-in. But when you add all this up, it comes in the next four years, we're gonna have to have cash of $699,594. We presently have an equipment fund balance of $141,059. The net cash needed over the next five, four to five years is $558,000. So, basically, if we spend that 138, and we do that times four years, we're gonna have enough cash to fund our equipment needs for the foreseeable future, and it will drop off after that. The other significant item in our budget is $46,000, and $46,391 for the Walker Bridge, which is gonna be a tab of about $414,846 when it comes due, which will be 10% of the cost of actually doing that bridge. So, those are the main items in our capital budget plan. Last year, the budget was $175,000. This year, the select board has moved it up to $200,000, which, which I feel is probably reasonable. John, you wanna make some comments?
No, I think you did a good job, Hardy. It's just too bad that we got behind the eight ball a little bit on the equipment replacement, because we wouldn't have such a problem in 2024.
Yep.
But the, the equipment needs to be replaced when it's due.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, I have a question, Hardy. It's Robbie Sprague.
Yep.
On the fire truck, on the, on this article, it says $15,000, but on our budget, we had $65,000. Is that just the same thing that happened to the rescue budget, or is that just what
I would say-
What you guys allowed for?
What happened was, when we had our meeting, we had nothing, we didn't have anything from the fire department.
Okay.
So, what we did was, we put in what we have given for the last couple of years.
Okay.
And I think, if I go through my notes, I think you have a fund now of probably, what, how, $150,000? Probably a reserve in your accounts right now for a new, new truck?
Yeah, if I look right here somewhere. It's 112, I believe, if I'm looking at the right one.
And you get a couple, but you're getting a couple of years plus. I, I think you're up, you should be 150, based on what it was last year, roughly.
Yeah, it could be, because there's a CD and, and the money market, so if you add the two together.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
But at some point, we know we're gonna have to do something with our fire truck situation as well.
Yes.
I think it would behoove us to really start planning what it's gonna cost us to do that.
Yeah. That's on the list to do, for sure. I know I need to work up a plan for you, so.
Yep. We'll be going through this process again coming year, I suspect.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Kim, are you still on?
Who are you asking for?
You still on, Kim?
I am.
Okay. So, that everybody knows, I believe the number is $140,000, I mean, $46,000 has already spent on the Walker Bridge, is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's about that. I mean, Hardy, we have some there, and then we've got about $100,000 already saved in the general fund. Capital budget has money set aside for the Walker Bridge.
But we've already, even though there's nothing happened to the bridge, we've already spent $46,000 in engineering costs, and we have no idea why that bridge will actually come to construction. It could be two, maybe three years, or five years. So, it's important that we, you know, continue the capital budget for when, that's another major issue that we have to deal with.
Can, can I make a comment here too, Joe?
Wow.
Only, it doesn't pertain to just this one article, but I wanna remind everyone that because we're not voting from the floor for any of these articles, there isn't a way for us to be able to amend any of these articles. So, if you dislike something in the article, and you're voting by Australian ballot, and say you decide that you don't wanna go for that article, you can't change any of the dollar amounts, it's a yes or a no. So, then, then that article, if everyone votes it no, it's down, and then we start either without a capital budget, or we go back to a special meeting and, and then do all this all over again. And that goes for Article Four, Article Five, those are our town budgets, our highway budget, our capital budget, our humanitarian, we can't pick and choose now, we can't amend any of them, is what I'm saying. So, it's a straight yes or no. So, we're gonna keep them, or we're not going to. And then we start from the drawing board again, at another time, doing the same process again within another thirty to sixty days.
I, I second what Kim is saying, that's very important this year.
Any other questions on the capital budget? Well, if not, we'll move on to Article Twelve. This is newer this year, shall the town of Grafton raise $1,000 for the support of the Grafton Community Church Food Pantry Program. Mary, do you wanna speak to that?
I am here. Perhaps you see that Suzanne Welch is with me. We are masked, her computer didn't work two doors away, and so she's come over here. So, bear with, bear with us. I hope you all know that we've been running a food pantry at the church since March lockdown. We started when the Grafton Inn closed their kitchen very suddenly, and had to get rid of all their perishables, and that was the impetus for the food pantry. It was the inn needing to get rid of all this food, and we got rid of every last mushroom that day. It was really quite beautiful. And it's continued that way with donations of both capital and foodstuffs. We have food. Every day, people come, they come quietly, sometimes they just knock on the door and walk in, sometimes they call ahead and make an appointment. And then, we also do a lot of delivery. We've done, everyone eats meals, every Wednesday, we deliver 50 meals to the community, and the volunteer drivers, one of whom's a select board member, also brings food to these households all over Grafton, but also, to be honest, in Athens, Wyndham, and a little bit in Townsend as well. So, it's been quite a journey this year. All the money that we do for the food stays in the deacons' fund, which is separate, and the deacons' fund is only used for humanitarian expenses when we do stuff with the Grafton Cares, or with the school. We always keep it very quiet, but that's how that money is spent. And so, we ask for the town's support, because it does benefit anyone when they need food. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, if there are no questions, thank you, Mary. If there's no questions, we'll move on to Article Thirteen, shall the town of Grafton raise $237,200, $2,037 for the support of the community program of the Southeast Economic Development Strategies? Is there anybody from the BEDC here to speak to this?
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you are.
Great. My name is Sarah Lang. I am a program manager at the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. My colleague is also here with me, RT Brown. He is our Director of Business Services. Thank you guys so much for letting us speak a few minutes. I know we're all tired of being online, so we'll keep it short and sweet. Just a little background for you guys, BDCC, the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, is one of 12 regional development corporations in the state of Vermont. We service the, the Wyndham region, for which Grafton is within our service area. SEVED, the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, is our affiliate organization that was founded in 2007. And the best way to sort of look at them in your mind is that SEVED does the long-term strategic planning, and then BDCC takes those plans and implements them through programs and projects. So, we asked all 27 towns in our service area for municipal funding, and we use that funding in a couple ways. One is to directly fund implementation of programs and projects. Another big one is for capacity. Last year, we helped bring an additional $2.7 million directly to other organizations, and we use some of that municipal funding to help provide capacity to do that. And then, we also use municipal funding to leverage bringing more money to the region. So, if any of you've worked with grants before, oftentimes, you need matching funds in order to get that grant, and so that is one of the, the few ways that, that we use in municipal funding. Like I said, we asked all 27 towns to support at $3 per person, so it's by population. Last year, in 2020, we were supported by 16 communities. Grafton was one of them, so thank you guys so much for that. And we were just asking for your continued support. I'm gonna throw it over to RT, he's gonna cover the pandemic relief that we've really been, sort of full-fledged over 2020.
Yeah, hi folks, I hope you can hear me okay. As, as Sarah mentioned, SEVEDS has this long history going back to 2007, and our leadership, not only within SEVEDS, but at, at the BDCC, I, I would say fortunately, but it's also unfortunately, have had direct experience with various types of disasters. So, the, the closure of the Vermont Yankee Power Plant, as well as Tropical Storm Irene, really put the folks at the BDCC in a position to respond to the COVID pandemic when things shut down almost a year ago in March. All of the programmatic staff shifted to direct outreach to small businesses. We stood up a webinar series that happened every other week. We were one of the first in the state to do that, and that was really to bring in our federal legislative staffer, delegation staffers, to help businesses understand what's the best way to access state and federal relief programs. Six businesses in Grafton received technical assistance from, from, through, through those efforts to access federal and state relief. Ten Grafton businesses with at least 30 employees received over $200,000 in paycheck protection program. And one firm with 13 employees received some funding, significant funding from the federal programs. And, and I bring that up because, you know, the, the businesses were really having a difficult time understanding how to access these programs, and I sincerely feel like part of our role and effort was to help people understand and connect them with the appropriate resources. One of the programs that's near and dear to my heart, because we helped to administer it on, on behalf of the state, was what's called the CDBG Sole Proprietor Program, Sole Proprietor Stabilization Program. Two Grafton businesses we worked with to become eligible for, and they received $7,500 apiece. So, those were two sole proprietors, each receiving $7,500 in CDBG CV grant funds. So, I mentioned the webinar series, I, I'm gonna shift a little bit to another program that I used to help administer, but thankfully, we, as Sarah mentioned, we have some additional capacity through this work. We have somebody that's working on a community facility support program, and that's to help community facilities, essential community facilities, like the church that was previously referenced, or it could be a town hall, take a project from point A to point B, and help align appropriate resources, as well as support with a little bit of funding to help push those projects along, because so many of those projects that are near and dear to our heart are run by volunteers, and we've, over the years, come to learn that sometime additional capacity needed, needs to be added to those projects to help them further along. I know, I know the person that's leading up that program now is, is I think working with two organizations within Grafton to, to help see if there's some support that we can provide those two organizations. So, with that, again, trying to keep things brief, I'm gonna toss it back to Sarah.
Thanks, RT. Hopefully, you all have seen or will see our, our impact statement, that has a lot more detail, it has everything we just talked about, as well as a whole page of some program updates, but happy to answer any questions about what we talked about, or what else, any of our other programs. We're here to answer questions.
Do you have any questions, Sarah? If not, thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We shall move on to Article Fourteen. Shall the town of Grafton adopt amendments to the town plan authorized by the Planning Commission sent the 21st, 2020 by the Select Board for the adoption at this town meeting by Australian ballot? Is Dave Corwin here?
Yes, I am.
Dave, do you wanna speak to this, so that the residents here know what we're talking about?
I'll, I'll be as brief as possible, I know we've been here for a while already. A lot of you already sat through this, so the quick summary is, last summer, the Select Board made a motion to ask the Planning Commission to make two changes, proposed changes to the town plan. One dealt with land designation, we had a land called Critical Resource Areas, and their specific request was to remove all state and town lands from that designation, because it did cause some confusion in terms of what can those entities develop on those properties. It opened a can of worms, we looked into it, and our final outcome, without going into all the details, was to eliminate the Critical Resource Land Designation altogether, because it caused a series of problems. There is a summary of all the problems and how this solved it on the town website, and you can read about that, or I can go into it in more detail if you want. And so, all of the changes, there's two changes to the town plan. This first one, all, there was about four or five pages worth, but they all revolved around the cleaning up that- but they all revolved around the cleaning up that chapter so we could eliminate Critical Resource Lands. Uh, to be clear, this elimination from what we have done in research has no impact on taxes or uh value or listeners' value of the land. Um, that we can find anything that says that. The other point that the Select Board wanted us to look into was that there was nothing about invasive species and this is becoming a growing concern. And by putting something about invasive species in the town plan, it better positioned us for future grants, et cetera. And it becomes part of what we see as a concern. So we added that piece as well. Um, the Planning Commission had a hearing. After the hearing, we approved it, moved it to the Select Board. The Select Board had a hearing. After their hearing, the Select Board approved it. And as per our rules in our town, it now goes to a full town vote. And we aligned everything so we could have this town vote on Town Meeting Day so we didn't have to have a special meeting or anything else. So that's why it's sitting here as an article.
Any questions of Dave or on this article?
Uh, I have a question. This is Charles Bonin. Um, a few Select Board meetings ago, I wanted to discuss the town plan regarding the energy section. And I was told by the chairman that it was only appropriate to discuss the amendments that uh were requested by the board. Uh, I'd like to discuss the plan at this time if it's appropriate.
I I think you might want to hear what Charles has to say. But again, as Kim has said, we're voting what has been done, up or down. We're not gonna be able to further amend anything.
Yeah, I I guess, I guess it's okay. Um, we can't, we can't change anything. We can't add anything. Um, if if there is a future amendment to the plan, whether it be the energy section or whatever, um, that has to be started with the Planning Commission and then they go through that, the very, you know, what is possible as a public hearing with the Select Board. But go ahead. Why don't you say what's on your mind?
Well, I I thank you all for allowing me to speak. I I may be addressing something that was um just addressed by um Dave Culver. Uh, what I don't understand is in the plan at page 36 is what I consider to be a very negative comment. And the comment is that the town since 2012 was involved in a very controversial project and then in 2016 voted down the windmills. Um, I don't understand why the plan incorporates that negative comment. The plan is something that is to occur uh from 2021 to 2031, I guess, 10 years. And things change. Science changes. We all see that. We're all seeing that today. Um, and I'm not certain why there are certain sections in this plan that says that commercial you uh development should not be permitted as to commercial windmills. Um, however, it says that in certain areas, residential windmills can be um permitted. And as far as I can tell, that would allow, I I have a little lot next door to my home and I guess I could put a residential-sized windmill, which I think is 1,300 feet, um, on my property. Um, I don't, I really don't understand going forward. Nobody knows what's gonna happen in one year, no less than five or 10 years, from science and from the requirement that the town of, uh, excuse me, that the state of Vermont is trying to accomplish, which is turning more and more green. And why this plan is so negative against a commercial Ebedrola-sized plan. I understand what happened in the past, but that's the past. And this plan should be going forward and permit whatever is necessary to help the state of Vermont go further green. And all I can see in this plan is that the way that the town is going to do that is by uh going to winterizing homes. And I don't see how they're going to force everyone's home to be quote "winterized." So uh, that's my comment and I thank you for allowing me to express it.
Charles, before I give the comment, just so you understand, the town plan is good for eight years. And the town plan uh is a living document and it can be changed weekly, monthly, yearly. Uh, and just because the town plan says something today, that might not, when that plan was written and adopted a year ago, things can change. And it's up to the Planning Commission to keep the current on the town plan. So if there's an issue of, it doesn't have to be commercial wind, but anything, uh, that's what we do. We, they have a printed amendment to the plan. It's a public hearing and then it goes to the Select Board and then eventually it's voted upon the town. Um, so so that's, the plan is is a living document. It's supposed to be looked at yearly based on whatever um world changes. Dave, go ahead.
Well, respect, well, respectfully, I I don't think that's what the plan says. It says it's a 10-year plan. And uh, I don't see anywhere where it says it's a living plan and it's to change every uh so often. And I don't know how that's ever gonna happen. Uh, that it, there's no, there's no need to have the negative language in there that it does have regarding commercial wind.
Charles, it doesn't say that in the plan because that's not what the town plan is. These are the regulations on the plan. This is what, this is what the state um and what the Planning Commission had to live by. So go ahead. Dave, do you have any comment?
Um, Mike, it it's a, for for many that are in this meeting realize it's a massive can of worms. And sir, I don't know you, so I don't know um how much you were around during the dreadful five or six years that tore this town apart. Uh, the only comment I can make is I sat on a board of seven people with some very strong personalities, very split on a lot of opinions. And when I came on the board, uh, and I've got a couple of other Planning Commission members, they can speak up if I'm out of um off-base on this. There was somewhat of paralysis in terms of getting the plan done and time was running out. The energy chapter was a blank page with nothing written. Um, we spent, I can't tell you how many hours, parsing every word, every comma, negotiating, arguing, trying to be civil, trying to be polite. I commend the seven members of that board because it was a very contentious, long period. We finally came to a point that we all agreed on. And I think everyone from Joe to Bill to Al to others that are here can agree that right now, nobody likes the plan. And maybe that's a win, maybe that's a loss, that everybody gave up so much of what they wanted and what they believed in to come to a consensus to finally have a plan approved. It is what we've got. Um, I have said many times, give me the power to write the plan and just adopt what I write and I'll cut it down to a 40-page document. But it's not a committee of one. It's a committee of seven that had, then had to be approved by a committee of five that then had to be approved by a community of 600. And what we got for now at least is what we got. Um, I would ask you, if you're ever interested, an appropriate time to get a much deeper discussion about this would be to attend a Planning Commission and meeting, which are regular, we have them every month. And there is a public comments section there. And it would be an excellent forum where we could probably delve a little bit deeper into it and and give you a better answer than what we have time for tonight.
Well, I thank you, I thank you, Dave. And I, and I was here um and I remember how it did tear the town apart. And I think that's the next article that should be discussed. Um, and I, I, I don't, I uh have a home in New Jersey and I have a home here. And I would like to be able to be part of the Planning Commission. Um, but unless it's on Zoom, I I can't. I'm sorry.
Everybody's on Zoom from now until who knows when.
Okay, well, then I would be very happy to be included.
And they're always duly warned on the website and they're whatever, the second Tuesday of every month.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to Article 15. Um, that shall the voters of the town of Grafton rescind the article of the time Shall the voters of Grafton adopt or attend municipal plans by Australian ballot? And by so rescinding the term, that authority to adopt a new town plan or amendments thereof to a majority of the members of the Select Board as set forth in 24 VSA 4385. Uh, I'll let, Stan was, he's under the weather. He was going through the dresses. I'll do my best, but Dave could help me along with some of the other members of the board can. The reason why this is here is is because exactly what Charles is saying, uh, he doesn't like a portion of the plan. And he's claiming that the world does change. And yes, the world does change. And the contrary to what Charles is saying, the plan can be amended yearly, monthly, anytime there is a change. But every time the plan is amended and goes to the Select Board, I mean, the Planning Commission's public hearing, the Select Board's public hearing, and then it has to go to a special account meeting. And a special account meeting costs somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,400. So every time there's an amendment, unless it's the, unless it's done during a town meeting, okay, it's it's it just becomes an extra cost. So the Board felt that they would like to see this overturned back to the the old way of doing it. That's just what we felt. It's up to the residents to decide how they want to handle it. But that is the reason why it's up to them. For no other reason other than cost. Dave, or somebody want to make a comment on this?
I wasn't involved in the writing of the original motion to add this piece to the process. And I wasn't involved in the motion to get rid of it. So um, we as a board have never talked about this. I can only talk personally that I envision the plan to be a nimble document and having this extra step makes it less nimble. Um, I didn't speak out strongly against it, but I was against it before. Adding this step of having the town vote, um, I'm I'm still against it, which means I am in favor of this motion of going back to the old way. My personal opinion, not representing the board.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, it's Charles Bonin again, and I have a comment. Uh, my memory was, and I attended the meeting at the school when Ebedrola met there for the town. And it was Ebedrola that asked for the town to vote on this. And I don't think it came uh to a vote for any other reason that Ebedrola required it. And I I don't see why we would want to allow five people to make a decision on something that's important, at least as important as I see it, and the the environmental part of this, the energy part. Um, but then it becomes very political. And I I just think it's worth the expense to allow a change to be voted on.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, we shall move on with voting panel, Article 16.
I'd like to make a comment.
Who's that?
Marley Hall.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think, just quickly, I think that that the plan can be changed daily, weekly, monthly is is a good point. But I think it's unrealistic to think that at each little change we will then go and uh have a town. I think it can be, they can be put together. They they can be voted on once a year. I don't see that it's a willy-nilly uh, let's just get it voted and pushed through. I think the town is sensible enough. And certainly the Planning Commission is very sensible that they can pull together the changes and we can have a yearly vote. That's my my comment. I'll go off to the end.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd like to respond to that so people understand the timing of this. Um, in order to save the $1,400 by having a special meeting, uh, we set a goal to have this vote at the town meeting and therefore not having extra cost. We asked Bill Kearns back in August to put together a timeline of when we'd have to write the changes, accept, make sure the changes are what we want as a Planning Commission so that we could then call our public hearing, which I think was a 45-day wait, and kind of backdraw for us from county meeting backwards when we need to make this happen. It was shocking when he came back and said, "You guys got about three weeks to get the work done." So I agree, this should not be updated very often, but once a year is what I envisioned. But even that once-a-year thing, if you guys want to make changes for a year from now, you gotta have your act together by August. That's the problem with it. It 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 restricts how we can make changes. So um, if we have it in there, again, the plan, if we make no changes from now until the end of 2028, uh, you know, I I think we can live with it. But um, I I'm a believer that it should be more nimble than that. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll just uh, comment on to Dave. Um, I agree. And I think before this recent plan went through, the plan lagged and was slogged over and ignored for a very, very long time. And I think you did amazing work as a as a committee to start to pull together. I think it's now rolling. The attention is on it. And I think it's not as much of a total pushing up of, you know, the hard, hard work has been, I think, mostly done. And there's more to do. I'm not discounting that. But I think they should, it should be easier going forward. And I do think that having five people, uh, I think echoing Charles Bonin's uh comment, having five people just narrows it down a little too far and becomes way too political, which we are all aware of. Um, and I think the town has a opportunity and should pay attention and and go towards its future. So that's the end of my comment. And again, thank you for your hard work, David. It's unbelievable what you do. So I'm off.
Can I make a comment, Joe?
Who?
Can I make a comment? This is Kim.
Sure, go ahead.
So if 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 you take the 500 voters that we have and they're looking at this article and they're coming forward on voting day to vote for this Article 14, not 15, do they, if they didn't attend this special meeting, do they have any idea what they're voting on and what was amended? Because you can't explain what was amended way back when. And but we had to wait this long in order for the amendment to take effect because we need a complete town vote. So I can guarantee you that when we come down to counting time or we're gonna have questions, what what are we voting on that was amended then? I mean, you have, it's such a long period of time to wait for any, it could be the most insignificant change and we're gonna have to wait. It could be updating our 10-year census. It could be our school. But you can't change it though until the following year when you have a meeting. That's all.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Article 16. We've already addressed. So we'll move on to Article 17. Shall the town of Grafton pay its property taxes to the treasurer in four-year installments with the, with the date being August 15th, November 15th, February 15th, and May 15th? And what I meant very clear, that if this article gets voted down, then the entire year's taxes will be due as well. So I would urge everybody to to vote in favor of this article. Any comments? If not, the final article. Shall the town of Grafton levy an interest charge on all overdue tax payments on real and personal property of 1% per month or fraction thereof from the date of each installment for the first three months? And 1 and 1/2% per month or fraction thereof and 1.5% per month or fraction thereof for every month thereafter, as provided for in 32 VSA 5136. Would you like to respond to that?
Sure. This article is just a traditional article that's on every town meeting. We collect the 1% tax for anybody who's late on their taxes. That goes into the general fund. Again, if this gets voted down, there's no picking it apart. That's it. You're done. We collect no interest. People can be as late as they want, and there will be no interest charge for their taxes until they become delinquent in the year-end of the taxes. So it's just a traditional, hopefully people say yes. It's never changed, the 1%, and the 1.5% has been there for a long, long time.
Any comments? Okay, the final thing is that, and on the agenda, is that traditionally, we had a real recounting live without Zoom. They would have a candidate form. Presently, we have two candidates, unopposed, Sue Allen and Susan Welch. Would you, anyone like to make a comment to the board? Not necessary, but if you'd like to, go ahead, please, and introduce yourself.
Joe, I'll just say very quickly, for people who don't know me, I was appointed to replace Al. I feel very honored. I take this very seriously and work very hard. I have state government experience and municipal experience, and I am hoping for support on town meeting day and look forward to serving my neighbors of Grafton. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Susan Welch, if you wanted to say something?
I'm so grateful to Mary for inviting me over, so that I have a screen to share with you. I am running, I'm Suzanne Welch. I'm running for the two-year term. And I am very grateful to be sitting here, running for this office, to Stan Mack. And I understand Stan is not with us tonight, but I think we all should say a big thank you to Stan for all the public service he's provided to this town and especially on the select board. I would like to say three things about my candidacy and ask for your support. First of all, I care. Unlike all of you on this team meeting, I care about Grafton, and I care about the quality of life we have here, and I care about the future of this town. And I also, second thing, show up. Bill and I have been living here since 2000, part-time and full-time since 2015. And I have enjoyed so much getting involved in numbers of kinds of activities around town, organizations, boards, and I love doing that. I love being involved. And I want to serve my community by serving on the select board. And finally, I will work hard. I will really put my shoulder to the wheel of this select board. One of the things I appreciate so much about the select board that's just now going out of office and others will, I mean, will stay on, is really the momentum that Joe's leadership and other members of the select board have created in town government. I think Dave Culver's a great example of that tonight, too. Just, this town is moving forward. It has a participatory democracy. That's a little bit of muddling through, but still, we get from point A to point B, and I'm really going to be happy to be part of that. And I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Okay, we also have some other candidates. Kim, I don't know, do you know who else is running? If you're here, you might want to say something?
Dave Ross has his hands up. His hand up.
Well, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the night off and want to compliment Joe Polio and the lovely setting he's in and chairing this meeting, the select board members, Jack Hardy, Dave Culver. I think you've all done a tremendous job. I don't think people appreciate the effort and the hours and hours that go into what we've seen tonight and, you know, what is it, an hour and a half or something we've spent? You guys have spent countless hours during the year, and unfortunately, we won't have a real town meeting where, you know, we could acknowledge you. But I personally wanted to compliment you and encourage you to continue. Thank you.
Any other candidate want to say something? Tucker?
I've enjoyed my three years on the board, and I have decided to go on another three years. I appreciate everybody's work on the board, and I love Grafton, and I want to see things succeed for the people of Grafton here. So I would appreciate your vote.
Any others? If not, just in closing the meeting, I'd just like to thank Stan Mack. I know we can't go in person at the town meeting for his dedicated, long-term service. The board, Stan and I served many years together, and I'd start Stan to continue, but he needs to take a break. And I'd also like to thank Alan for his service. Unfortunately, Alan had to terminate his time, but Alan was a very shilling person. And I want to thank everybody for attending this meeting. It's not the meeting that I'd like to see happen, but this is what we start with. And I appreciate everybody coming, and I appreciate all the comments. And don't forget, town meeting, you need to vote. And right after the town meeting, there will be a nominational meeting for the new elected officials. Any other, unless you have any other comments?
I just want to comment that I certainly encourage people to please vote as much as possible by mail or dropping your ballots in the drop box. I will be there for, along with the rest of my clerks, will be there from 9:00 to 7:00 on Tuesday, March 2nd. Polls will be open. There's five ballots. There's a lot of reading to do. It will take time. If you come in person, you're more than welcome to do that, but I think you would find it much more convenient to do it at home, and it is safer, and it is easier for us if you were to just drop it in the mail or in the slot. That's it.
Okay. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you for attending.
Night.
Good night.